Let the record reflect, it is Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and the time is ten oh three AM. Board Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa is excused. Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Wayan. Present.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Waheee.
Present.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Present.
We have seven trustees present. We have quorum.
Uh, thank you. Aloha, Kako. Welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via live stream on OHA's website at www.OHA.org/live. Before we continue, I would like to announce that items three B, four to fifteen will be deferred, and no discussion will take place as they were deferred in yesterday's RM meeting. Items three B, one through three, were received under the seventy-two hour deadline, and this is due to the quick turnaround. And lastly, I will be taking the agenda out of order. I will take up three B, two and three first, followed by three B one. Joining us today, we have our CEO, Kapoana Stacy Ferreira. I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administration, administrative staff joining us today.
Mahalo, Chair, trustees. Uh, joining us today for our BOT meeting, we have Chief Financial Officer Ramona Hing, Financial Analyst Grace Chen, Endowment Director Ryan Lee, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, Director Oiviv Wellbeing and Aino Momona Kuike Kamakea Ohello, Director of Community Engagement Niniaw Kawaihai, Grants Manager Kiara Newman, Interim Information Technology Manager Kevin Chalk, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Arlene Aguirreado, and Strategy Consultant Owalani Freitas. Mahalo.
Mahalo. First on our agenda is approval of minutes. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa is excused. Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask. I'll come back. Trustee Waheee. Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
And trustee Trask. We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is Workplace Violence Awareness Training with Desiree Santana. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up, signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have one person signed up. We have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, please put her on.
Aloha, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Mahalo. Aloha, Chair and trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm a beneficiary for Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. I'm also a non-Akuli Hawaiian homestead less see. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify on Workplace Violence Awareness Training. One of my career skills is human resources. I worked for a large bank in Hawaii that contracted Work Life Hawaii to provide our eight thousand employees with EAP services. Work Life Hawaii is an excellent partner. They have many years of experience. We also contracted Work Life Hawaii to provide our employees with trauma counseling after they were involved with a bank robbery incident that may or may not have involved weapons and threats of death. In one of the slides in today's presentation, it shares OSHA's definition of workplace violence. "Any act or threat of physical violence, harassment, intimidation, or other threatening disruptive behavior that occurs at a workplace." The worksite includes, let me read that again. "The worksite includes, but is not limited to, the buildings and surrounding perimeters, parking lots, field locations, and traveling to and from work assignments." Trustees, the worksite also includes work emails and work-related text messages. We have advanced in our society to understand domestic violence is not just physical violence, but also verbal and emotional abuse. This is the same with workplace violence. It's not just physical abuse, but also verbal and emotional abuse. When an employee experiences workplace violence, they carry home with them the stress and weight of the abuse they experience at work. They suffer and their ohana suffers because they suffer. I want to clarify that workplace corruption and workplace performance, accountability, and transparency, stealing and being caught for stealing, lying and being caught for lying, breaking work rules and being disciplined for it, is not the same as workplace violence. We all need to understand the difference and stop workplace violence. Kea Kua Poo. God bless all of you.
We turn the time over to Stacy.
Mahalo, Jermaine. Wonderfully said. I really appreciate that. Um, Chair, I did, before we have Desiree start, I just wanted to um say that workplace violence, um and this training in particular, uh has been a priority for me when I came on as the lead administrator here. And as I have been speaking with you as trustees and with the support of Chair Lindsey, uh we are taking workplace violence extremely seriously. And it is important for our staff to know that we as leaders are going to provide them with a safe and productive work environment. And that work environment is set by us as the leadership, and everything cascades from us. So I mahalo your time and um the energy that you're gonna put forth in this training. And at this point, I would like to welcome Desiree. Mahalo.
Hello. Aloha, no Kako. Uh, mahalo Nui for being here, um present during this uh training. It should be only about forty minutes. Can everyone hear me pretty good? Okay. Again, my name is Desiree Santana. I am an EAP counselor and trainer for Work Life Hawaii. Um, I do have the PowerPoints um handouts provided on the table for you guys. Um, the last page is the evaluation that you can do later um on your free time and um send over to Tyler at HR. He can um send it over to me once it's completed. So we do um value your honest feedback on the training. Mahalo Stacy um for introductions, and I'll go into the training. So let me just. So this is the objectives for today. So we're gonna talk a little bit about workplace violence in Hawaii. Um, what is workplace violence? Is it preventable? Diffusing a volatile situation and then going over resources. Before I go further into the training, I just wanna pose one question to you all. And the question is not so much for each of you to answer it. It's more of to think about how you can use this question in your daily life, um whether it's in your personal life, with family, with your children, in relationships, and even in your professions as trustees. And the question is, pehe oi, how are you doing? Um, what's going on? How can I help you? These are the questions that are, that can be very easy. It can be an easy question to ask, but at the same time, the importance of this question is to really check in, check in with yourself, um checking in with your colleagues, coworkers, and even your team. Um, what we've been seeing in the past four years since the pandemic is the rise in stress and mental health, and how that's been impacting um individuals, families, children, and even how it's impacting in the workplace. So employers and businesses have been reaching out to us um for support and resources because they have been seeing a rise in workplace conflict and workplace um violence. And the focus is to learn um how to recognize some pre-early signs, not just the early signs we'll talk about today, but the pre-early signs, how to recognize that, and how, what kind of prevention tools um you, that you all can use to kinda stop what could be potentially violent, stop it from the beginning. And pehe oi, that question is just one question, one tool that can help with the preventative um steps. And we'll talk more. So this slide here, this just goes over a timeline of workplace violence that's happened in Hawaii within the past twenty-four years. Um, I'm not gonna go through each um incident or event in detail. It's just to show that from November nineteen ninety-nine to February twenty twenty-three, these all, what all these um incidents have in common is that it happened within the workplace, whether in their business, their office, or within their workplace grounds. There's two examples that I'll bring up of um recent incidents, and I do apologize if this does stir any um emotions or triggers any thing for you all. And if so, please contact our office to um be able to process and speak with a counselor. I just wanted to put that out. But the two um examples, one is the December twenty twenty-three, the Porridge um domestic violence incident, and that happened out in the community and the public. So not only did it have greatly affect um the family that was involved and the children that witnessed, but it has a profound impact and effect, effect on, on a larger scale. And then the second um, the second example is the chiropractor Manoa family um tragedy that happened this year, March. And again, even though it didn't happen in the workplace, in the private practice office, it happened in their home. Um, these are the two examples that just shows you that it, it does have a larger impact on us all, regardless of the direct or indirect exposure that we have to these events and tragedies. So I just wanted to point out the difference of what workplace violence could potentially um look like. Okay, so I'll just briefly go over this definition here, OSHA's definition. So again, "Any act or threat of physical violence, harassment, intimidation, or other threatening disruptive behavior that occurs at a worksite." "The worksite includes, but is not limited to, the buildings and surroundings, perimeters, parking lots, field locations, and traveling to and from work assignments." And I believe, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember the speaker, Jermaine. She did mention, as trustees, you know, you're also working um outside of the office, maybe remotely, so uh emails and those sort of communications as well um could be included in this definition. So thank you, Jermaine, for that. Okay, so let's look at um conduct and behavior. So these are the conduct and behaviors that we wanna be able to recognize. Um, verbal, physical altercations, uh fighting, it could be arguing, being sworn at or yelled at, intentional damage to property, obscene phone calls. And in this day and age, it's not just the phone calls, of course, it's the texting, the messages, um emails, and even other forms of communication, like social media types of um communications. Then there's suicide attempts, suicides, beatings, stabbings, shootings, and rapes. And sexual assault and sexual harassment would be a part of this as well. So violence, violence may come from, so it's not only coming from um professionals or employees within the organization. It can come from other people, like strangers and the general public, um our customers, clients, vendors, or visitors, friends, or family members. So I just wanted to highly stress, it's not just between, you know, colleagues, employees, and employees. It can be coming from outside of that. So we're looking at the next slide, high-risk occupations. So here it's listing um banking, delivery drivers, healthcare professionals, public service workers, customer service agents, law enforcement personnel, and those who work alone or in small groups. So as we look at this, this slide here, um and again, I'm just gonna pose a question. You don't necessarily have to answer it, but are, are you able to kinda see as trustees where you would, which categories you would fall under um the high-risk occupations? Right, so a couple of them, it could be the public service workers. You all are out there um representing and providing service out in the public, and then oftentimes are working alone or in small groups. So those are just a couple of the high-risk occupations. Yes, yes. And now we're looking at the environmental risk factors. So same thing, as we look at this slide, just take a look at um the categories here and see, you know, where you would fall as trustees. So there's exchange of money with the public, delivery of passengers, goods or services, having a mobile workplace, working with unstable or volatile people in healthcare, social service, or criminal justice settings, working late at night or dur, during early morning hours, working in high-crime areas, guarding valuable property or possessions, working where alcohol is served. So again, um just looking at the categories under the environmental risk factors, um you guys, are you guys able to kinda see where you fall? Thank you so much, Stacy. Okay, so working with unstable or volatile people in healthcare, social service, or criminal justice settings could be a uh envi, environmental risk factor as trustees. Then there's working late at night or during early morning hours, possibly working in high-crime areas. There's that possibility. And now we're looking at statistics. So out of five thousand three hundred thirty-three fatal workplace injuries in the US in twenty nineteen, seven hundred sixty-one cases were due to intentional injury caused by another person. There were eight hundred forty-nine fatalities due to violence and other injuries in twenty twenty-two. And then there's an increase eleven point six percent from the six hundred sixty-one fatalities in twenty twenty-one. So the question I'm just posing out there to, for you all to think about is why do you, why do you think that there has been an increase of workplace injury or workplace violence over the past couple of years? If anyone does wanna share what their answers are, please do share. Did you have anything to say? Why, why do you think um there was an increase of workplace injury or workplace violence over the past couple of years? You can go. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I think it's just because of one, one reason is just because of high amount of stress that we take on every day, especially as public servants and um stuff that we, we carry on our shoulders and uh it's not easy. So I think dealing with that stress is one thing, you know. Guess we tend to take it out on others.
Right. Exactly. Oh, yes.
And, and along the same lines, a lot of people today are facing tremendous financial pressure. And some of the um publicized cases, including a couple that you had on your slide there,
Right.
involved people facing financial crisis.
Right. Yes. I would say if we were to just look at the past four years since the pandemic started, um not saying that it's the pandemic's fault. I think that there was a lot of stress going on even prior to that for, for everybody, um especially just living in Hawaii alone. Um, the economy or the prices of Hawaii, you know, to live here. So a lot of financial stress. So that's just one of the reasons why um individuals or families would be stressing out. But there's others, you know, relationship stress, um work stress and so forth. But just looking at the past four years as counselors, um we're able to see that there has been a rise in um stress and mental health uh for individuals and families and employees, professionals, even employers themselves. So and when employers and businesses reach out to us for trainings like this, it's because they have noticed workplace violence, workplace conflict is happening more, um more than what they've recognized or observed in the past. Just briefly, I'm just gonna highlight um OHA's, thank you, workplace violence policy. So this isn't the complete policy for your organization. This is just some of the highlights. So zero tolerance, prohibits acts of violence, threats of violence, intimidation, or conduct that creates an intimidating work environment. Prohibits conduct and comments which are not severe enough to be unlawful, but which are still inappropriate in the workplace. All employees are responsible for notifying HR if they have experienced or witnessed prohibited behaviors in the workplace. OHA's policy applies to all employees, vendors, suppliers, contractors, and visitors. Retali, retaliation against any employee who has made a good faith complaint has cooperated with and/or has served as a witness during an investigation is prohibited. And again, this um your, this is just the highlight of OHA's policy. Um, if you have any questions or concerns regarding the policy, then of course, direct it um with your HR. But we, as EAP, we do encourage to be very familiar with the policy. Now we're looking at ten early warning signs. Okay, so these early warning signs is something that uh as, that, as EAP, we want you all to be able to recognize and know that if you recognize these early warning signs or behaviors, then it's something to, you know, to start using the preventative tools. So expression of anger. So not necessarily do people have to be in active fighting mode, but just knowing that they're expressing some sort of anger, um violent talk or remarks. So again, um these behaviors is not necessarily in a active red situation, but it is a warning sign to take seriously. Um stalking or unwelcome conduct, um contact. So again, uh stalking and unwelcome contact can help, can happen not just in person, but it can happen through social media. It can happen, you know, phone calls, texts, messages, um those sort of things. Wide mood swings. So that's something to definitely be queue in on and see that as a early warning sign when someone may be fluctuating, fluctuating between um various emotions, especially if it's quickly, um you know, whether it's from sad, happy, upset, you know, just having various mood swings that could be concerning to you. Um, so that's something to keep in mind. Substance abuse. Uh, again, in the past four, just looking at the past four years, we have seen a rise in substance abuse. Um, a lot of people who have been using that as a way to cope. Um, you know, they have been, have been struggling and and using substance, substance. And when they come to work, they, they start to show um maybe concerning behaviors. So those are sort of, the sort of things to look out for as well. Bizarre statements, writings, and or communications. Again, not just, not just um through letters, but also through emails, texts, um social medias. Threat to harm others. Threat to harm others. That definitely is something to take, be mindful of and take, really take it seriously. Because the threats can sound, can be kind of confusing, and maybe it's not so um black and white. So if it sounds like it's something that's um it could be a safety concern for you or for your team, for your colleagues, that's definitely something to, to take seriously and take uh, take the next step. Bringing firearms or weapons to work. Experiences lost perceived as unbearable. So this is when someone, maybe they, they're grieving, they're grieving of a loss, a loss of a loved one, and they're having a an extremely hard time with it. Um, that's something to really queue in on and and recognize as serious as well. And then others are fearful. So if you do notice that, you know, whether if you feel fearful or not, but if you recognize that others are feeling fearful, then that is another important sign to take seriously. Now this is in the red zone. This is what we would call like an active um immediate threat. So agitated behaviors. So a person is pacing, jumping up and down, or jumping up from a seated position, maybe drumming their fingers, they're, they're consistently, persistently moving a lot. Um, hitting an object repeatedly, rapid blinking of eyes. Angry, suspicious, or blank facial expressions. Moving into someone else's personal space. Loud tone of voice. So some people might have a loud voice, but we're talking about an usually inappropriate loud tone of voice. It's inappropriate to the place or situation. Aggressive touching. So if they're poking you, um grabbing your arm, those are also some behaviors of an immediate threat. And then rigid body posture. That's usually a sign that someone is um maybe feeling angry, or they're about to do something. So you wanna queue in to their, the way that they're maybe standing, holding their position, and their posture. Okay, so when, if, or when you find yourself in a potentially violent situation, this is uh steps or tools to diffuse that situation. And I, we always educate that, you know, there's ten steps here, but we don't want a person to feel like, oh, we have to do one through ten in that order. And that's not necess, necessarily the case. We just want you all to be able to have um some information on how to handle uh potentially violent situations. So the first step would be to call for help. So if you are not alone and there is put, you know, have, you have other maybe colleagues, coworkers, employees that are around, um please give them instructions, maybe ask them to call off the security or call for police or whatever that is needed during that situation. So number two, quickly assessing the situation. So it's assessing. So it's assessing, you know, what where are you? What is this location? Does the person have any weapons or firearms or anything that could put you or anyone else in a potential, um, unsafe situation? So it's quickly assessing that. Number three, keep arms low and hands in full view. So this is a reminder that if you are able to keep as calm as you can be in a crisis situation and show them that you're not a threat, then the hope is for them to not react and for the situation to not, um, exacerbate. So again, keeping arms low and hands in full. Um, just showing that you have a calm demeanor and you're there to, to help. Um, number four, speak calmly, no sudden movements. And again, it goes with number three, you know, as much as possible, keeping calm as much as you can during this sort of, um, potential violent situation. Number five, stay at least five feet away. We don't expect you to measure the distance. All we recommend is that, you know, reminding yourself, distance is important, um, during this time. Clear bystanders and separate opponents. So if you do see that you have employees, staff, other people that are nearby or maybe near the person who could be potentially violent, you wanna make sure you're letting, you're, um, keeping your safety in mind and their safety as well in mind. So trying as much as possible to communicate, you know, maybe, um, saying, oh, you know, Stacy, can you take the two of them and go to the next room? Something to instruct, um, to keep distance and to keep them away from the potentially violent person. Number seven, verbally reflect or repeat nod. So at this point, I just wanna emphasize, we don't expect you guys to provide counseling or, um, go into that mode. What we, what we are recommending is to, um, to show that you are there. You understand there is a situation, a potential crisis situation happening and that you're there to, um, just listen and in a way, provide safety for yourself and for others. So that, so as I go through the steps, it always goes back to remembering safety for yourself and safety for others. Number eight, listening, don't argue or defend. Again, this is very important because the person who has these violent behaviors, potentially violent behaviors, um, they may not be in the right state of mind. So the best thing you can do in the steps prior that I talked about, you know, being as calm as you can be, showing that you are not a threat, um, verbally reflecting, repeating, nodding, listening and not arguing and defending. Cause when we don't argue and defend, um, ourselves, like verbally to them, then we show, uh, then the hope and the goal is for them to not feel triggered. Because again, the person is most likely not in the right state of mind at that point. Okay, and then number nine, giving options. So we don't wanna go overboard and give a lot of options because it may, um, it could potentially may trigger or confuse that person, but maybe you notice that in one part of the room, it's warmer. And then in the other part of the room, it might be cooler. So if you just ask, would you like to move to this side of the room? And, and knowing that it's still within that safety parameter, you don't see anything, anything that could, um, pose a risk. So those are just some of the, the options that you, you can bring up to that person and show that you're listening, you're there, and this is all while waiting for help. So the, the main thing is that you wanna make sure from the get-go is that you were able to, to call for help, whether it's you yourself or another colleague or, um, person was able to call for help from the beginning. Number 10, offering a drink of water if possible. So the reason why this is in the step, in the 10 steps is because research has found that the act of drinking water, just swallowing, um, calms a person down. So this is the reason why it's in the 10 steps. And when you do offer water, you don't want to give them a glass, a mug or anything that could potentially be a weapon. So something like in a styrofoam cup would be the best. Okay? Alright. So now we're, so we're looking at domestic and family violence. The fastest growing type of workplace violence, I believe Jermaine in the beginning also mentioned this, so, so I'm glad that she did mention this, affects the safety of the victim, other employees and organization. Report obs, we encourage that you report observations if there is an immediate danger. Provide assistance, support and resources. And of course, talk or collaborate with the victim to develop a safety plan for the workplace. And then when I say resources, of course, um, you know, if you have your own internal resources within OHA, great. You know, just making sure you're helping the person get connected to the support that he or she needs. You also have us, Work Life Hawaii, EAP as a resource as well. Um, we often do provide services for these sort of, um, incidents and, and situations. And then just making sure, you know, you're reporting to upper management or HR, human resources. Prevention is key. So as I had mentioned, um, earlier in the training, we talked about pejoi, you know, letting that question be a reminder to check in, whether it's with yourself or with your colleagues, coworkers and your team. So that's one of the pre- prevention tools. And then the other prevention tool is the diffusing. Um, unfortunately, it may not be prevention because at that point, you, um, you assess that you're in a potentially violent situation. So you would need to use some, uh, the diffusing techniques. But so the key is know your policy and procedures. Notify HR of any concerns and observations. Be aware of your surroundings. Follow security measures. We do wanna share why people don't report. So fear of retaliation. And I, I do, I believe that retali- um, retaliation is prohibited in the policy, but there's still that fear, so it's very, very real. Um, number two, fear of outcome to the individual. So the individual, um, who has those violent behaviors, you know, um, that's, that's still the fear that there may be some kind of outcome or consequence to that individual. Because a lot of times, we have some kind of connection or relationship to that person. Number three, don't want to make waves. So we have found, you know, could be a cultural thing, just living in Hawaii, but we have found that a lot of times, we don't want to vinialle or butt in or, um, or be involved in something we're not involved in. The main thing with the, with these three reasons why people don't report, we wanna emphasize that it's not so much about the reporting, but it's about the safety for yourself, for your, for others, for your team, your colleagues. So that's what we wanna emphasize and, and have you all remember. Okay? So wrapping up, so Work Life Hawaii EAP Services, we are available not just for counseling, um, services, but we also can provide consultation. So if you do have questions or you have some very challenging, um, situations happening within your workplace or maybe even at home, those are every reasons to give us a call and one of us counselors can talk with you and talk it through, help you process and come up with resolutions. So we offer free comfort, free confidential professional counseling services to you and your household members. You have six visits per contract year, so every October it renews. Concerns do not have to be job or work related. We do have financial and legal consultation available that we can connect you with. We understand that stress, there's various levels of stress, various types of stress, and financial and legal seems to be a pretty high up there type of stressful situation. So we wanna be able to connect, um, participants to the appropriate professionals. The last one, resources available for caregivers and kapuna. Unfortunately, this is a very new thing that happened, um. We no longer have the professional to refer you to if you are a caregiver of a kapuna. However, we can still provide resources and connect you to, um, to the professional or services that you need in regards to that. So every month, you all should receive monthly newsletters with, each month is different as far as the topics. So it varies from mental health, health-related topics, wellness, ma- stress management, um, coping with stress and coping with change, et cetera, so forth. There's a lot of different topics that, um, that we have and that we share with everybody. Employees and supervisors will get, um, get newsletters each month. And for the supervisors, there's usually a lot of Q and A's that's answered. This is our contact information, so please feel free to reach out to us. We are open Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. We, our main line is the eight oh eight number, but we do have a 24/7 toll-free line that you can call after hours, weekends, even holidays. We do have counselors that is available to speak with anybody, um, for immediate needs. So that's the 1-800-994-3571 number. And you can also reach out to us by email as well. This concludes the piece of my training. I'm not sure, time? Is there, is there time for questions?
Definitely, yeah.
Oh.
I'll just let our trustees know. Do they have any questions? Uh, trustee Trask?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We're having tech problems over here, no video and sound on and off. But I wanted to thank the presenter. This was very, very informative. And I had noticed that you had said that the Hawaii supervisor that would be coming out to employers and supervisors, but I wanted to ask if you could put me on the list. Because when I look at the, um, the Hawaii supervisor that you included, there's very important information that I would like to, I would like to see the handout fully as a trustee. And just a comment, that I think that it would be good in your future work if you provided more of a scope of coverage than just for employees and supervisors. Because your advisory is when problems like this come up, take it to the HR. If the problem that arises is coming from admin and HR, it doesn't give the employee an option. So think about that. Because workplace violence, uh, is not just limited to supervisors and employees. You have a trustee that gets up screaming and yell, yelling, coming across the room. How do I report that? Uh, the second, the third thing was, do you offer any other training? Like you've come here and showed us something that's really, that I think is very, is a very good thing. But do you have any other training or assistance like what you just showed us in terms of the family, uh, services you offer?
Thank you for that. I'm trying to think, um, so as far, in terms of trainings, we do have like stress management, coping with change, coping with grief. Um, we have a list of trainings. I wanna say about 20 something, maybe more topics, but but yes, we do have various types of trainings related to, you know, mental health. Um, coping with grief and coping with change typically, well, and stress management. A lot of our trainings, even though it's direct, it's trained, we're training employees and professionals that are contracted with us. Um, it doesn't just stop there. As the employees or the professionals, when you intake this training, you're able to kinda share this, um, you know, translate it over to your, to your family. Unfortunately, we're not able to train family members, but we're able to provide counseling services to all employees of OHA and their household members. So sometimes what we find is when we are providing counseling service to the family members, whether it's individual or a family session, we're often providing certain pieces of these different trainings are bringing, are being brought up, but not in a training format. It's in a more, um, personable, um, conversational collaborative way. So that's the only thing I can think of as far as, um, how families could benefit from like the training piece. And then going back to your fir- very first question, I believe you said, um, the services are only available to employ, um, employees or, and supervisors, is that correct? Is that what your question was?
Yes, because we're not, you know, we're not really employees or supervisors.
Mm hmm.
But I think the training is pretty good. It's like the Hawaii supervisor newspaper you have.
I believe as trustees, and then please correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy, I believe as trustees, they do-
They are supervisors.
Mahalo. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Uh, I did not hear a response to my question. If the problem involves the supervisor or HR itself, what options do we have?
Can you share that?
Trustee Trask, when there are issues with our internal HR, we do have external, um, HR attorneys who assist us. Mahalo.
I, I understand that Stacy. My question is, what do we do when the problem involves the in-house HR attorneys or admin? This is the advice we're getting. Is there, is there a complaint process other than that?
If it's administrative, if it's a complaint against administration, it goes to HR. If there's a complaint against HR, we have an external HR, uh, attorney that we, we hire to assist us with investigations. Mahalo.
And who is that Stacy? Who is it Stacy?
Just a moment, I'm getting Everett to the, to the table so he can answer. Mahalo.
Well, if it is Everett, just say so.
I'm asking Everett to come to the table so he can provide you a response. Just a moment.
Uh, good morning trustees, uh, uh, to answer trustee Trask's questions, we've, uh, previously engaged with the ESNA law firm, um, headed by the founder Anna Lento Sneed, uh, who's performed external investigations for OHA.
I can't hear you Everett. I can't hear you.
Uh, excuse me, so, uh, in the past, uh, OHA has engaged with the ESNA law firm, uh, headed by the, uh, founder Anna Lento Sneed, uh, who's an attorney, uh, to engage on- to engage on OHA HR employment matters, thank you.
Everett?
And I would like to further add that when there are issues with trustees, there is a separate process. Similarly, when there are code of conduct, there's a process in the BOT bylaws for that complaints to be handled in that fashion.
Let me comment Everett, please send me the contact information for ESMA. And Stacy, your response is hard to accept when I've had a situation, actually a couple, where I've been involved in admin problem discussions with admin staffers, like Stacy, like Casey. And when I returned to finish the conversation, he was let go. So sometimes-
Trustee Trask, I'm sorry, but that's, that's inaccurate and inappropriate-
Excuse me Stacy, excuse me, could I please finish? When I'm in a conversation with an executive administrator, and I returned the following week and heard that he was discharged, how do we follow up with that?
Trustee Trask, your statement is inaccurate, he was not dismissed, mahalo.
No, he was given a choice and he left. What I'm trying to do is find out how we follow up with HR and other matters when the executive staff is gone. It's like this morning trying to call for tech assistance and finding out that our tech team was dismissed.
Trustee Trask, your statement again is inaccurate regarding Casey.
I'm not speaking of Casey, I'm speaking of Tiger. Casey is one example, Tiger is another.
Casey was not given an option, he left on his own, mahalo.
Yes, he did, he did. Tiger is the other case that was, wasn't given an option either, but I don't know how-
Trustee Trask, we're gonna end your conversation because it's not on our agenda. Okay, do we have any further questions from any of the trustees? If not, we'd like to thank you, Serena?
Desiree. That's a beautiful name though. Mahalo for your time.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Committee on Resource Management, 3B2. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed to speak upon this item.
Thank you, trustee Wahe.
Thank you Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as your Committee on Resource Management has met on May 22nd and engaged in full and free discussion, I'd like to move the following three actions to the Board of Trustees. First, I'd like to move to approve an OHA Maki'a microfunding program to alleviate water bills and property tax costs for native Hawaiian farmers statewide.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote.
trustee Huna?
Aye.
trustee Akaka?
Aye.
trustee Akina?
Aye.
trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
trustee Souza?
Aye.
trustee Trask?
Aye.
trustee Wahe?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
You have eight yes votes.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to move to approve six, a six-month, I'd like to approve a six-month online native Hawaiian-owned 8A Academy, a statewide cohort program comprising of sequential learning modules and customized mentoring designed to assist 20 native Hawaiian small businesses to succeed, to successfully navigate and complete the federal 8A certification process in order to be eligible to compete for federal contracts.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote.
trustee Huna?
Aye.
trustee Akaka?
Aye.
trustee Akina?
Aye.
trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
trustee Souza?
Aye.
trustee Trask? trustee Wahe?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
And trustee Trask? You have seven yes votes.
Thank you, trustee Wahe.
Madam Chair, finally, I'd like to move to approve the fiscal budget realignment number two, core and non-core for the fiscal period FY24 and FY25, as summarized at attachment number one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, roll, any discussion? Roll call vote.
trustee Huna?
Aye.
trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Okay, you know what?
trustee Akina?
Aye.
trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
trustee Souza? trustee Trask? trustee Wahe?
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
trustee Trask?
I would say so, thank you.
You have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is community concerns and celebrations. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
Yes, we have one person, we have Jermaine Myers.
Please put her on.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Aloha, thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Jermaine Myers. As I've shared many times, I am a beneficiary for beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. I'd like to share with you today my definition of empowerment. My first community concern is, is that what I just witnessed, the way trustee Mililani Trask spoke to Kapohana Stacy, and what she was saying about X-C-O-O-K-C Brown, showed us what workplace violence looks like during a board meeting. That's all I want to say about that, it's disempowerment. Trustees, I'm on the Non-Aquily Mighty Neighborhood Board. I'm, our meetings involve civic engagement and ways to empower our residents in Wainaimoku with a voice to speak to our elected officials to advocate together for community resources on every level. Education, land and water, housing, roadways and transportation, public safety, even advocating to ensure our crown lands in Wainaimoku being used by the military will be returned to DHHL when they're done using it. We had a three-part series in April. This past Tuesday night, one of the presentations that came before our board was from ex-Kapohana Sylvia Hasi. She shared the work she's doing with her nonprofit Bee Hawaii. Her nonprofit works involves supporting local farming of flowers and foliage to perpetuate and culture, the culture of Le Goina Ole. As you, many of you know, Wainaimoku has, is a farm town. It's a farm moku, we have lots of lands for farming. Growing flowers and foliage in our home gardens, but also on large-scale farm level, using flowers in Hawaii instead from abroad imports nationally and internationally. Trustees, I personally believe, as a beneficiary, my goal is to grow into a benefactor. I believe OHA's mission is to take beneficiaries and grow them into benefactors. I believe that beneficiaries take the role of receiving. We receive help, we receive resources to build a sustainable life. When we are transformed into a benefactor, we change our roles into a giver. We give help to others, we give others resources to build their sustainable life. OHA's mission, I hope, is to make many beneficiaries into benefactors. May is Mental Awareness Month. The workplace violence training today at the board meeting aligns with advocating for mental awareness. Mahalo Kapohana for today's training. May is also National Police Month. We show our support for the fallen men and women of law enforcement by lighting up our home or our workplace with blue lights. Maybe OHA can change some of the light bulbs at the front of Na'lamakukui to blue during the month of May. Also, one parcel at Kaka'ako Makai, close to Alamoana Boulevard, can also have blue lights during May to show our Kaka'ako Mauka neighbors that we support our men and women of law enforcement. If OHA is already doing it, please accept my apology. I've been in the country for the whole month of May with my ohana. And most importantly, May is also Mother's Day. We all, every one of us entered this row through, through our mothers, excuse me, through our mothers' womb. Trustee Souza, I appreciated reading your tribute to your mother, Julia Halle Souza, in Kapai'ola, Quiet Acts of Love, how she nurtured and supported you, and your lifetime gift of music and melee. I believe it was the first tribute to a mother I read in Kapai'ola. It was nice to learn more about you. Trustee, my sister, Waylen Hano Hano, said to aloha you. She worked at Aloha Airlines the same time as you in the in-flight services department. She reads Kapai'ola, and she keeps on repeating. Trustee Souza is good-looking. At this time, I want to share with all of you, kia kua pu, God bless all of you. Mahalo for this opportunity.
Thanks Jermaine, she's not wrong, please tell her I said hi.
I will.
Mahalo.
Thank you Jermaine. Do we have anybody else offering community concerns and announcements?
No one is signed up at this time.
Our next BOT meeting will be on June 12th at 1:30 PM. Updated email will be sent out by Board Secretary by the end of this week. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote.
trustee Huna?
Aye.
trustee Akaka?
Aye.
trustee Akina?
Aye.
trustee Alapa is excused, trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
trustee Souza?
Aye.
trustee Trask?
Aye.
trustee Wahe? Chair Hulu Lindsey?
Yes.
You have eight yes votes, we are adjourned.
Thank you trustees.